I call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present. Recognition of visitors and guests, we welcome all the guests here this evening. 1.3 will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I haven't had any requests for public participation this evening. 1.4 to recognition of students, staff, and community. We have a recognition to the Worthington girls gymnastic team in capturing the Big South Conference and being named Section 3A Champions 10 years in a row, along with the team advancing to state. And the following individual gymnasts qualified for state, for individual state competition: Haley Bullerman, All Around; Addison Gerber, All Around; Kennedy Thiner, Floor; Jordis Weber Beam; and Brooklyn Dykstra, Floors and Bars. And also, the gymnastics team also earned the Section 3A Academic Award for a gymnast with a combined GPA of 3.97. So I'd like to congratulate the gymnast team. Okay, moving on to the agendas, approval of agendas.
I move approval of the consent and main agenda.
Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Matt. Matt approves consent and main agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
I move for the approval of the minutes of the January school board meeting and the committee meetings.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the minutes, 3.1 and 3.2. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, items on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the items under the consent agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Erin to approve the items under the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0 main agenda, 5.1 monthly financial overview for Dave.
You should have the revenues and expenditures report for the end of January. This reflects the budget amendment from the past. And right now, we're just over 50% of our revenue having been collected, which is a little higher than this time last year. And our expenditures are just over, are just under 48%, which is a little bit less than last year as well. There's been nothing unusual or extraordinary in the last month, so.
Okay.
Anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Dave?
Chair.
Steve.
Yes, under the debt redemption, we show income coming in at 3.2 million or so, and we show that the expenditure is going out of 440,000. When does that expenditure catch up with the revenue part of it?
I believe that generally goes out in March, I think, if I remember right, the big payment.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, moving on to 5.2, approved capital outlay requests.
So the operations committee reviewed the capital outlay requests. If you look at or reviewed it, in the capital outlay, we receive about $900,000 in funding. And through our normal process of whittling it down and looking at things, we're at 871,000 in expenditures. Long-term facility maintenance, it's 1.3 million current funds available. And based on this, we would be expending 1.5 million plus. And then other funding, there was in technology, 149,000. And the expenditure side, that's really a lot of our E-rate funding, so, just so you know, it covers that. And the operations committee was recommending approval.
Okay, any questions?
I make a motion to approve the capital outlay request.
Second by Adam.
Second.
Second by Steve to approve the capital outlay requests as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a question on the, maybe that is, all right, I answered my own question, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No question?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.3, approved the 2425 NCIC budget.
So the NCIC budget, total revenue is 1,236,014. There is the initial revenue of just slightly under 2 million, and then the incentive revenue is 37,000, which brings that dollar to that amount. We're one of six school districts that are part of the NCIC. We all will be approving this budget this month. Each have their own separate budget to approve. And so, based on that, the operations committee is recommending approval.
I make a motion that we approve the integration collaborative budget.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori to approve the 2425 NCIC budget as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4, approved to declare surplus property.
Dave, do you want to?
I believe we have some books.
Maybe Josh can.
Yeah, I wasn't at that meeting.
They've just kind of run their course, so we're not sure that anyone's going to be interested in buying them, but we need to declare them surplus because they're not really usable for us anymore.
Okay, any more questions? Books are available if anybody wants them. Any, okay, need a motion?
I approve or make a motion to declare the mythology books surplus property.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Erin. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5, discussion on student, school board representative.
So, short history, the board at one point started out with one school board representative, student representative. We went to two and tried to create alternating a junior and then a senior, so it kind of kept going. Since that point in time, however, it worked out, the junior dropped off, and now we've been without a school board student rep for probably, oh goodness, it's got to be at least three years, or pretty close to it. Anyway, it was brought back up, the instructional committee had a conversation about it and wanted to have a full board conversation about if you want to try and restart the program based on student interest.
Okay, what's the board's feeling?
Is there somebody out there with student interest to be on there?
Right now, we don't know that, if there's a student or not that's interested, till we put applications out. And how it, when we put applications out, those students that were interested would make an application, and typically, one or two board members, along with the high school principal, would do an interview of that, of those students that were interested. Mr. Noble was the principal at the time that we had student representatives, so.
Well, I certainly would like to see a student representative on the school board. We approved it, what, it was probably six, seven, eight years ago now. And then I think there was an interest for one year, and that's kind of how we got out of the cycle of having one. So I think it should be put out there to see if we have student interest again for this kind of a position on the school board.
Chair.
Steve.
I agree, I think it, I think it was a good program for us to have representation. It's nice to hear if they have concerns and their viewpoint on those concerns. I also like the idea of having two, I like the idea of having one for a junior and then one for, and then go over into as a senior, to have some continuity and have, by having two, instead of if one can't make it, hopefully the other one could. And at that point, I'm not sure how long the application interview process would be if we move forward with this, which I hope we do. I think it'd be good to have two of them. I think it'd be good to start out with, with maybe one, pointed for, find someone for next year that's a junior, and then maybe from there work into they become a senior, and then put another one person on the following year. If we put somebody as a senior on at this point, by the time we get it done, the school year's just going to be about over with, and I don't know how much interest they may or may not have in participating that close to their graduation. So I would suggest we move ahead with it, and I also suggest we, we look at somebody coming in to be a junior next year, and then we add the second person the following year, adding another junior, someone coming to be a junior. And I'll make that a motion.
I would be willing to go to advisories or homerooms of sophomores and juniors this spring if we need to try and like, you know, drum up some interest, you know, talking about what it's like to be on the school board, or what the opportunity entails. I'd be willing to do that. And I think to Steve's point, you know, if we can start pushing it in the spring, and maybe even have kids apply towards the end of the school year, they could get some sort of like, you know, onboarding over the summertime, or at least hit the ground running once the school year starts in the fall.
Second the motion. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any more discussion?
Chairman, is there a possibility of a little compensation for each one of these students for sitting at the table? I, well, they're getting the experience of sitting at the table.
I do believe there's scholarship opportunities for student school board members, but I don't know if it's an automatic, I think, once they're on, they're going to, 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 to miss community. So how competitive that is, they're all on an opportunity, but I do know a student school board rep.
I just thought maybe if they had a little incentive for an hour or two, and then, and I'm not talking a lot of money, I mean, 20, 30 dollars a meeting or something for that hour, they might give them a little more interest of being actually an active board member on the board.
Chair. When this first got started, we did have that conversation, and at that time, we, the board elected not to do that. We felt students have, are involved in a lot of different things, this is an opportunity for them to gain experience. We don't pay other students for doing things within the school district, participating in committees and things like this. We just didn't want to start that precedent of starting to compensate students for activities and opportunities that they have available to them. So we did discuss that earlier and decided not to do it. I, I think for that reason, I don't think we'd want to be compensating one group of students, or a couple of students for doing something, and others, we don't compensate them for other activities that they do within the district itself. So I don't know if we really want to get into a precedent of doing that. We do it for one, we're probably going to have a lot of others that feel they're, also deserve some compensation, if we're going to be paying them for doing something that we, that they volunteered to do, we're not forcing anybody to do it or making them do it. So I would say probably not the best idea to compensate them.
Okay, it's a good thought, but let me, maybe, not quite adequate, not quite in order at this time, maybe, for past practice and so on. Any further discussion? We have a motion to, to proceed with getting a nominee or a, right?
We have a motion, second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that will go to the principal?
Yeah.
Okay, 5.6, discussion on intermediate school principal positions.
So, based on where we're at, Dr. Clark resigned for, she's doing another, has another position, so she will not be coming back. Currently, right now, Mr. Van Breezen has been serving as the interim, intermediate principal. And in my view, and I believe even Mr. Noble's view, he can speak for himself, though, he's done a good job. I know you've received some communication from a few staff members, and I actually sent you an email recommending that I would offer the position to him to be hired in that role, and then open up the assistant principal position. But it's your choice, you can either place him in that position, or advertise for an intermediate principal.
I think his performance and support from his employees speak for himself, so I agree. I think, can we, are we going, can we make the motion tonight, or?
Yep, you can, you have that.
I'd make the motion that we put Cory Van Breezen as the principal at the intermediate school, and open up the vice principal position for hire.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
He's, he's an interim principal now, would this become effective as of now, that he'd become not the interim, but?
It would become fully effective as the principal of July 1.
July 1 was when this would take effect, then.
He still has to serve out his interim.
Okay, just wanted to check when it would become official. Thank you.
I have no reason to doubt the glowing recommendations we've heard about Mr. Van Breezen's performance. I think with, I think a good best practice would be to post a position when, when there is a, an administrative, well, when we're to hire an administrative position. I think it, posting the position for a limited amount of time would give the possibility to identify some, you know, future potential leadership interest in our district, or externally as well. So I just, whether it's part of this conversation today or elsewhere, I just wanted to mention that I feel like the best practice would be to typically post a position when it's for someone in the administration.
Okay, any further discussion? He has been serving in it since the beginning of the year, correct?
Correct. He took over last year about this time, right?
He was doing that role part of the year.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? The motion is to appoint Cory Van Breezen, the principal at the intermediate school, and open up the assistant principal position. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.7, approved American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Compliance Report.
So this is an annual report that needs to be approved. Mrs. Hagan held a meeting here the other evening, and it was positive, and with this, it's a state-required report that goes into MDE, so we did it last year, so we need to do it again. So the recommendation is approve the report.
So move.
Second. Motion received, second by Tom to approve the AIPAC report. Any discussion?
How many actual students do we have in the Native American, that's why we have to have this, or not why that, we have to have this report, because we do have?
Yeah, it's, it's over 20 when you're required to do this report.
Okay.
I think it's, is it 28 or 30? I can't remember.
Does this committee meet so often, or?
They generally meet a couple times a year.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approved request for bids for the installation of the middle school rooftop units, and replacing the roof, so.
Yeah, I'll probably let Dave give you that one.
We've been approved by the state to try to finish up some of our Esser dollars by replacing two rooftop units at the middle school that have kind of aged out, and then the two newest additions, well, not newest additions, the south end additions. And in so doing, we can purchase the units themselves through the state contract, but we would need to bid out for installation, and at the same time, we'd like to do the roofing as that, that's getting about 25 years old. So we're just asking for permission to go out and get bids as soon as the specs are ready.
Dave, just, this is bids for the installation of the units and the roofer, are we going for two different?
They're two separate bids.
Separate bids.
Yeah, it won't be the same contractor.
One will be to do the roof, and one will be to do the installation of the units we bought.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve going out for bids for the roof replacement and the installation of the air conditioning rooftop units.
Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin. Approve the request to go out for bids. Any discussion?
Mr. Skug, is, these are the air conditioning units, right? They, my boss just asked me to clarify on that, the last time that.
They provide heat and air foam.
Heat and, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Chairman, does the Esser cover the rooftop and the units?
Everything but the roof. The roofing does not qualify.
But it'll come out of the long-term maintenance, or?
That will, yeah. That, you just approved that, so.
Capital outlay?
Yes.
So we're covering it twice?
Wow, no. Just the roofing.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, discussion action on the baseball field improvement contribution.
So, Mr. Turner came to the operations committee and talked about where they're at and what they've been doing as far as improvements at the baseball field, whether it's the new backstop that's there, as well as the need for padding that goes on the new concrete for the backstop, new netting, new fencing. And then they also, you have a sheet that talks about planned improvements and what they've already completed for improvements. If you've been out there, there's actually picnic tables and a handrail area. So, there's some, they've spent approximately $50,000 currently, and they've raised 100, just about $130,000. So it was an update related to what they've accomplished and what they're doing, and then at the meeting, he actually requested $12,500 for support for the padding. The city's going to cover the other half of that for the, the backstop padding. And at the operations committee, they're recommending contributing $50,000 towards their overall plan. And Mr. Turner is here if you have questions. And I have the colored pretty picture, if you want to look at it, you've seen it before, but.
Yes, and part of the discussion we had, I think, was how much work that the baseball association is putting in to make improvements out there, how much they've accomplished already, and how much more they're working toward making this a very nice, functional field for not just the players, but for the fans to come in and watch it too. And although they were not necessarily asking for that amount of money, it was felt that, that it was for all the work they're doing, and all the hard work they're putting into fundraising they're doing and stuff like this, and grant writing they are doing and will be doing, that we felt it'd be a good gesture on the school board's part to show our support for what they're doing by giving them something more than just a little bit of token donation, make something more substantial that they can use to put toward getting more funding and more matching grants and things like that, and more donations to finish this project out. I think they have on the list, I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars that they're, that they're working on, so, so this is not going to cover all of it, but it would make a good start for them to be able to leverage more funding and get more work done out there. So that's, I think, Adam, maybe you want to speak to that, too?
No, I think we should have Jason explain the two big grants, or was it three, Jason? Two that you guys were looking at doing.
Yeah, we have submitted a grant request. I just got that submitted on Friday for the Twins Field for Kids Grants. It's a $15,000 request. We also have a request into the JBS Hometown Strong program for some support on that, as well as Noble's Co-op Electric. We have two grants we've already collected. There was the Eastrop Family Foundation, which is the family that owns Sterling Pharmacies in town, and also the Healthcare Foundation, each were $15,000 grants that were matching grants. So those generated $30,000 in donations from community members to match those, plus we got another 6,900 non-matching funds from community members. So, yeah, we've raised $129,000 total. We have about, we extended 49,000 of that, so that leaves about 80,000 remaining. And our estimates on the project are 204,000 right now. So that leaves us approximately 124,000 yet to raise to accomplish this. And I just want to thank the school board for the support that we've had when we started this approximately three years ago, in, you know, putting trust and faith in us to accomplish it, as well as the cooperation with the city. I think it's been wonderful, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Turner. Is the, the intent to, for the remaining parts of the goal, to do them as those dollars come in, or how do you see this going forward beyond the current plan?
Yeah, we kind of got phases in mind of what we want to do, and most of it is going to be accomplished after the seasons. So we will complete parts of it as money allows. We really want to accomplish covering the sands as the first part, and then the unique viewing deck that we have in mind, that we already have a sponsor for, would be, those would be the two priorities.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Jason? This went to Operations Committee, right?
Yeah, I make a motion to give WAB a fifty thousand dollar contribution towards their baseball field objectives.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Tom, to approve, to contribute fifty thousand to the baseball field improvements. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, at the operational, was it discussed then where this money would come from exactly? Is it just general fund dollars that would go towards that?
Potentially, we could use long-term facility maintenance, depending on what the project is it goes to. Otherwise, it'll have to be general fund.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Start your planning some more, Jason. Okay, five point ten, approved service maintenance agreement with Parallel Technologies.
The Operations Committee reviewed this. Parallel Technology comes out of the cities and they actually service pretty much our security cameras, doors, and things that are now on car keyed versus, or FOB versus the other method. It's a way for us to service all that, as well as have regular updates. They provide all those updates with that. So Amy Ernst did present and talk about this at the Operations Committee. The total cost of the service agreement is twenty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And again, that eliminates mileage and regular service for our system. Currently, right now, I don't remember, Amy told me how many cameras. We're just shy of three hundred?
Two hundred and ninety-one.
There we go. Adam remembered. Anyway, the recommendation of the Operations Committee was for approval.
Okay.
Hope to approve service maintenance agreement with Parallel Technologies, Matt?
Motion by Matt to approve the agreement.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any further discussion?
We do not have an agreement in place now.
Any discussion?
And this is across all the buildings of the district? Anything that?
Yep, every building.
Every building.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point eleven, discussion action, commitment to community venue, ice arena discussion.
So currently, right now, where this sits is there's no commitments for the ice arena at this time. I do know the city visited about it. They did not make a commitment as of yet. I did speak with Mr. Robinson, and they do, at this point, plan to take the lead on this. And they will work through that. At some point, somebody has to start to make a commitment. You guys talked about it at your work session. And based on, and on where the recommendation I had, you were somewhere between two and eight million. So I took the middle to some extent, and I'm recommending you commit five million for five years. You put a limit on it. And with that, then, the project must be started by then. That allows for planning and everything like that. I believe probably where it's headed is it probably will be one sheet of ice facility with maybe some other things tied to it. But that way, you've made the commitment. It could be more later on as the conversation goes on. But at this point, that's where I feel comfortable recommending to you to commit that five million, and you can utilize it till construction starts as kind of that fallback.
Okay. Discussion?
So I know the Fair Board was at City Council, so where are we getting with that? Because I guess they expressed interest in working with the association.
I don't have any knowledge on the Fair Board at this time. I would, one of the stipulations I would tell you is no money goes into that old building. I truly believe that that's not where your money needs to go. It's a new facility or it's nothing.
But what if we have to tie it to that old building with their current lease?
That's a ninety-nine-year lease that Hockey Association has with, with the Fair Board. Doesn't mean, again, I will tell you, and it could end up being that facility stays where it's at, it's used as long as it can be used, and a new facility is constructed. And I suspect that they will not use the school property that was offered, but I would include that as an option for them.
Mr. Chairman, still with the, with the, that list of unknowns, is the right step is still for us to make a, a dollar contribution commitment? A lot of open-ended things you just covered there in a moment. Or we're comfortable with a dollar amount being pushed forward and then come back to us with what, where and how and when?
Yeah, they would have to start to work on that, where, how, when, particularly if they're taking the lead. And again, this would be probably a city-owned facility, like ninety-plus percent of them are in the state.
Is the city only looking at putting in what we put in? Because that comment was made at City Council that-
I don't believe that's going to happen. You, you aren't going to, I can tell you, you aren't going to build a new facility for ten million dollars, or even twelve.
It was my understanding that that was one City Council member that said that, so.
I just feel the city's going to take the lead. I would like to see what their commitment is before I, I can move forward with the commitment. Not saying I'm against it. And until the fair thing is straightened out, I just, I'm not, I can't commit money to that tonight.
Didn't the, the city, they tabled it, did they, for a while?
I think it'll come up at their next meeting again. And maybe, maybe you just leave this item open till we cover number twelve and number thirteen. They're kind of, all three go together. So maybe, I would probably suggest we cover twelve and, which also leads into thirteen. And then you come back and take action if you decide to or continue the discussion.
Just one consideration on the, on the community arena. I wonder if we could pledge, like, you know, thirty percent of total cost up to five million or something like that. Just to kind of address some of the, the concerns about, you know, what if it's only a, you know, six million dollar, you know, sheet, one sheet of ice or something like that. We could consider pledging a percentage of the total cost.
I think we'll go back down to five eleven for right now. I mean, five twelve. And thirteen will come back, finish this discussion. Five point twelve, discussion action on high school facility remodel.
So I put a handout next to each of you. And just so you're aware, these are planning purposes only, so it'll come, it'll come back and look different when it's done. But the first one's labeled Option Six. Option Six is classrooms, and then addressing the food service area, dining cafeteria area, administrative offices, student support systems with some storage. And then it's looking at putting a science lab in with facts and facts classroom. So that's an option, and that's Option Six. The second part of that, so you under, the back page of that is the upper level. So it's eight total classrooms. And then there's an upper commons with an open space below. Just so you know, it addresses two levels and connects the north wing with the new wing. Okay? Option Seven, which is the third page, addresses making the addition as a science, science department. So one of the things you need to realize is the classrooms are larger. It addresses, again, the administrative support systems, the cafeteria piece of the puzzle, student dining kitchen. And then it repurposes the old rooms that were in the science department. And because they're oversized, that would get remodeling and probably create at least six, well, total of seven classrooms. So that's what it shows, seven classrooms. That would switch with science. The upper level is the fourth page. And you can see on there, it still has the upper commons, open space below. Excuse me. And just kind of shows what that upper level would be like. So the next page actually addresses if you're going to do a high school base-type project. It's strictly a base-type project, does not mean science. It addresses building renovations, administrative space, student commons area, upgraded kitchen and custodial, new classrooms, eight again. Let me see. Nothing towards the north wing. I gotta look at this, make sure I get the right ones. New storage, and then, of course, all the soil stuff. That's about twenty-two and a half million dollars. The blue column is the high school base with the north wing, IT, science, and facts. And really, it goes through that whole thing. The cost of that is twenty-seven million five hundred thousand. And that's leaving the science in its current location. Option Three is high school science, and the new addition would become science, along with IT, science, and facts. And that is just a little, well, it's thirty-three million plus. So with that, there's funding potential for this. So the fund balance of seventeen five, unassigned of four million, food service a half million, LTFM bonding. So we can bond against future LTFM dollars, which five million's about half. Is, so our annual LTFM, half of it would go to pay off this bond. And then that covers Option One. Option Two, you would need to utilize a bond referendum. And for Option Three, the same. And I would say bond referendum and/or your other option is lease levy. So it allows you to proceed with a high school renovation addition. It's just a matter of the option we choose, or you choose, and how about, going about funding it. So with that, and I will tell you, the, the new classrooms to make a science department, the additional cost is the difference between Option Two and Option Three, which is basically five million dollars more to make them science. So with that, then, I actually, the next sheet, the project options, I went through and did the funding that was available on the top, which basically is seventeen five, and this is every option. Four million out of general fund, half million out of food service, five million out of LTFM. That's bonding against future dollars. Twelve point five million from lease levy. And it's actually, I believe, a twenty-two-year note. That would have to be done. Or, yeah, I think that's, I've got it here. I'll cover that in a second. Twelve point five to fifteen million on a bond referendum with either an August or November election. So with that, I kind of went through and did recommendations. I did not put it all on there. The total dollars you would have available are twenty-five and a half million with no bonding or lease levy. Again, that's estimates. So Option One, just the high school projects, twenty-seven and a half million. Option Two is the high school project, along with a commitment for a community venue. And then I did mention the five-year stipulation there. Option Three is the high school project, five million commitment, and five towards the middle school and/or west project. And that's thirty-seven point five. So the next page is actually, and I, I want you to be, the thirty-seven and a half million, the thirty-two point five, the twenty-seven point five are just references to give you a, kind of a consistent number to work from. Each of them are five million dollars apart. The twelve point five in the last column, that gold, and then the gray, the twelve point five, is actually lease levy. And the reason I kept that the same was it allows you to look down below and see the tax impact that is created by using either a bond or lease levy. And so it's fairly consistent between the twelve point five million on residential homestead and commercial. Where it starts to differ is on the ag homestead and the ag non-homestead. And really, it's about three times more for the lease levy. So if you look at that, those numbers are based on per acre. Again, these are reference points to help you kind of look at that. The last page really refers to existing debt service plus the top end, thirty-seven point five million. I'm not sure you're going to bond for thirty-seven point five million. I would not recommend that. But it gives you, to show you what happens with the existing debt and where it goes. So with that, just, it, these are ranges of tax impact. The COP would be structured over twenty-two years. The bond would be structured over twenty years. The bond would be structured over twenty years. And LTFM is offset, used as directly from the levy, so taxpayers will not see a corresponding change in the LTFM one.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, Mr. Landgard on that. If you could explain more on the LTFM. And as far as, I'm not familiar with that, and what kind of impact it has going forward are those dollars that are committed?
So, long-term faci, long-term facility maintenance dollars are those that cover parking lots, roofs, potential some remodeling, or I shouldn't say remodeling, could cover part of a remodel. It's part of the dollars that we use to keep facilities up to speed.
Dollars that are coming from, what's the source of the dollars?
The dollars come from the state as part of our allocation.
Okay. And so we would be using those, those future state dollars?
Well, and again, that's local levy dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Like on the land values, do we gotta double them? Means, the land values are double what's projected here?
Um, yeah, you, again, this was just reference points, so you have an idea of what it is. I can get closer to structuring if you decide what you really want to do and where you want to go.
Mr. Chairman, a question, Mr. Landgard, for the, the lease levy. We had talked about that a bit with some of the consultants at our last meeting over the potential adjustments or changes. Do they have any confidence going forward, the ability to turn that into a referendum or voter-approved transition?
I can't.
Okay. Nothing new on that?
No.
Joe, Laurie, or Aaron, wait, Aaron?
Mr. Landgard, thanks for getting these additional options available to us, and also for the project options here. This is helpful. For the options one, two, and three that you mentioned on, on this page, for high school remodel and additions at twenty-seven point five million, is that, is that to go with option one or option two? Like, the orange or the, the blue on the previous page?
That really would probably fall under option one, you know, to cover your basic. I was just trying to cover a basic project.
So with the, so if you're going with option one, the base, it looks like the high school total would be twenty-two point five, or just under?
Yeah.
So, could we revise option one, for instance, on this page here, to say twenty-two point five instead of twenty-seven point five? Because it looks like you maybe added the, the, um, community arena, ice arena, along with that.
Um, I think it's the engineering, isn't it? Uh-huh. That's the architectural costs and the construction fees and...
That's, that's included.
That's a, that's what makes it twenty-seven.
Yeah. Well, so if you, so the very last number in the orange column is twenty-two million, four hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
So, I did this sheet mid-week last week. This sheet, ICS provided to me this morning. So, that's, that might be the inaccuracies there and that's happening here.
So, which is fine. I mean, it's better to overestimate than underestimate. So, I feel like we can, as we consider option one, two, and three, and how we would pay for each, we could substitute the twenty-seven point five million for twenty-two point five million.
If you do just the basic.
If we would do just the basic.
And I don't, I don't have a diagram for sure on that basic model.
Okay.
So, twenty-seven point five, current model is option two then, right?
Yeah, that's why...
Yeah.
Okay.
And option three would, instead of being thirty-seven point five, would be thirty-two point five, if you go with the basic model.
My question with ICS is, like, how do their numbers keep fluctuating? We started at twenty-eight point two, we went up to thirty-five, now we're at thirty-three for one. Because this seems like our numbers are really fluctuating, and why, why would that be?
Well, it comes from, these drawings have changed and adjusted some, and they probably have seen other bids to have a better idea of the bidding environment, is why they adjust. But these plans that are here, which, again, won't be the final, but they're a little closer, so they can take some of this, the square footage they might have figured in some of the others, is adjusted, is what happened. Until you get to a final project design, you won't a hundred percent know the number.
Give it an option, one, two, and three, you're including the five million for the hockey arena in each option.
I did on two and three.
Well, it's even on one. Community arena, five million dollars, it goes to all three options.
Well, in that base it is, because that makes it your twenty-seven point five to...
Yeah, it's actually twenty-two, twenty-two four, option one.
But if you look at his recommendation here, that's what he's talking.
One, twenty-seven and a half.
So what...
That's the middle high school, the blue one.
The blue one at twenty-seven.
Yeah, so what I recommended was the blue one, along with a five million dollar commitment, and then five million towards the middle school and west.
I was the one with the idea of making the, the new classroom wing a science wing. And I recognize that it's bigger classrooms and it is more expensive. I wanted to know how much more expensive, and it turns out that it's quite a bit more expensive. I don't know that we would necessarily need eight classrooms that have lab components in them. You know, I think we talked about six being sufficient for, you know, at least the foreseeable future. So we would potentially be able to trim, trim down there a little bit. But I think that there is value. I mean, I'll just, it's, you know, I understand if we veer towards one of the, the less expensive options, but I do think there's value in allowing science teachers to lead a lab in their own classroom and not having to, you know, shuffle schedules with other teachers. It would give students an opportunity to get more hands-on learning opportunities. And I was thinking that the, the classrooms that would open up then, in the existing science wing, would, would lend themselves nicely to more community and technical education that, you know, we've talked about as, as a driving force towards high school completion and having students be ready and equipped for technical training after high school in the trades. We do, of course, need to focus on, on our core subjects as well, but I think there's, there's a balance there, and there's potential for there to be more growth in, in that area. And I think there would be a lot of community support for additional training in the technical and trade areas. So, I'm, I appreciate having sort of the, the, the plan to look at and the numbers to consider. But I think if we were serious about option three in green, perhaps we could trim a little bit off of the, the classroom addition, and thinking about possibly trimming the amount that it would cost to renovate the existing science spaces for new classrooms if they were to be geared more towards technical and trade learning.
So if you did option three, John, your recommendation would be to either bond or lease levy sixteen and a half million to make that happen with everything else, correct?
Yeah. And again, bond, lease levy sixteen point five, now you're talking a longer lease than twenty years, so.
A lease levy of how much, sixteen? I thought the lease levy was capped at fourteen thousand something.
Um, well, it's fourteen million, but again, to get a higher number, you're gonna have to go a lot more years, so.
So if we go more years, you can go a higher lease levy?
And again, I would, I would tell you, as a board, you don't want to do that.
I just don't think you want a lease levy period, because I feel like if we do that, that's just our way of forcing the voters to come back later and say yes to bonding it, which I think is going to interrupt future projects for us, for them to come back and say no to. We can't be forcing people to say yes to something that... I would at least like to see us one time try and run a bond referendum and explain to these people that, please do not force us to have to use this, instead of just ram it down their throats the first time. I don't think that is fair to do this.
And if we did the, the sixteen and a half million, that would be the maximum bonding amount we would be considering with the full, as it is laid out now. Right? Which is less than we had talked about in some of our work session scenarios. And it could be less of a bond request if we allocate dollars, lesser dollars elsewhere, if we were to not do, I, I'd rather see us put a few more dollars towards an arena space and forego the west or middle school projects and use those dollars towards reducing our bond request to the voter. If we're looking at this from a, a larger perspective.
And I'm not gonna argue with you, Matt, and this was before you were on, but yes and no, because there was also, I think Tom was on, you know, there were six of us that was here that said middle school field was a priority before the hockey arena come along. And driving past there today, I was looking at it, and I have a hard time just pushing that to the side. If you go look at it, it's in top shape. I say, I'm not against the arena, but I don't want to push the middle school off to the side, because it's well-used, I think. I'd have a hard time not fixing that up.
We could pass over the west investment.
I would pass that before the middle school. Just my opinion.
You would pass the middle school and the west?
Just on this too. And I brought it up at the last, the district action plan, the first, the first thing on there is additional turf, well, middle school improvements, not necessarily the turf field, but middle school improvements. So, right, Adam, it's been on there for a long time to do something to that. And again, I drive by it every day, and it needs something, those, builds and that lighting, and some of that needs to be done.
Well, no, it's gonna be, continue to be used for football and soccer. It's, it's got high use. And like I say, just drive past there, like you say, you drive past there every day, and I was driving past there tonight, and I'm like, bare dirt down the middle, and it's like, yeah, probably couldn't use it right now.
So you recommending turf then? Because last time you said something about a sand or different other options than turf?
As long as we're using a high-quality turf, I mean, I think I could live with it, but just driving past there, I was big on going back to grass, but driving past there, looking at it, if you're gonna use it for soccer and football, I can't remember, what was the number, five hundred thousand for turf, didn't he say?
Yeah, the turf itself is right around six hundred thousand, where the cost of turf becomes is digging it down and then putting in the base, because that's what your longevity comes. The turf itself is not a high cost, it's that base piece of the puzzle with drainage.
So I just think for using it, if you're gonna use it in the spring and fall, I mean, not the, not the practice field, but the main field where it's soccer, football, no, I, I could see where that would be hard. I, I gotta do is drive by there, and it kind of tells a story.
So you would, you would recommend turf? You recommend turf instead of grass?
To use it more frequently, yeah, you're gonna have to. I mean, if it was just gonna be a football field, I'd say no, but it, there's, how many soccer nets out there? It ain't gonna just be a football field. To use it for multiple sports, I think it has to be turf, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think a question like this is a good example of getting all of the community partners involved. They're gonna be using it beyond just as a, a school facility and helping make the decision to have the best longevity and use out of a, an investment like this.
I mean, and I would be curious to pass over the west project and just put that to And we did this, what was it to fix up? Some of those, those other two practice baseball fields, I mean, and could we, in the future, like, turning one of them into a softball field or not, or...
Um, yeah, you can. Right now, we utilize the city field for softball. There is, again, softball fields at the college that we would have the option of trying to work out a deal with them as well. So, it, it is, the other part you gotta remember is on the, the city, the Centennial Park, they've put on the back burner that restroom. So the cost that you saw originally, I'm pretty sure the city would put the restroom over there. As, it's a better location for all the different activities. So, that would be less of a cost for the district to put up a restroom. And restrooms aren't necessarily cheap.
Sure. I, I would tend to agree with the west part of it and stuff, as much as that has good potential for something, I don't think at this point that we should rush into doing so. I like the idea of just putting it in the grass for now and just, and just get it seeded down, let it have grass, and let it be used for whatever people want to go out there and kick a ball around, or whatever, fly kites, or whatever it might be. I, I, I can support the five million dollars for the ice arena, and, and I think we should move forward with that decision so that the city and others can start the process of trying to move forward with some type of project. I, I understand that, that Steve Robinson's been in touch with some people from the state who are, who are involved with the hockey association, who have, you know, maybe a little bit more experience in ice arena construction, those types of things. And it sounds like, like it doesn't have to be a twenty, thirty million dollar facility unless you really want to put two sheets of it and all that. I think if we went with something more basic, we might be in that lower teens, lower to mid-teens range for, for the arena and stuff like this. I don't think it's really up to us to determine where it should go, since it's gonna be the cities. We're gonna put money toward it, but they're gonna be the ones doing, doing the planning and construction, all that kind of thing. I think we leave it up to them and the hockey association, whatever, to work together to find out what the best location for that is. And if, if they can work it out with the, with putting it on the fairgrounds and the fair boards, okay with that, you know, that, we leave it up to them. If they want to find another location, let them decide that. We put the money in, then we can step back from that. We don't have to get involved with all the rest of the process necessarily. And, and I think, I, I agree with Aaron and stuff, you know, I, I think that, that the, the added cost for the science, moving the whole science department out of there is probably higher than what I would feel comfortable with. However, I do agree with, you know, maybe doing, as we free up rooms in that area, we would move them into another, into the fax area, and then spread the fax out into another area and kind of, you know, rearrange things. I don't think they're necessarily looking for a wet lab type of thing. I think they're looking for more, maybe more of a dry lab type of, of classroom facility. So in, in doing it that way, you know, we could probably use that room without too much modification, you know, for them to be able to move in there. Plus, they'd have the extra, you know, classroom that they could use, plus we have one other classroom we could use for other purposes. It's not perfect and ideal, and at some point, I agree, we're, we should really be looking at how we're gonna address the... It's not perfect and ideal, and at some point, I agree, we're, we should really be looking at how we're gonna address the vocational aspect in our education. I don't think we're at that point yet, so I think when the time comes, maybe, maybe it has to do with how we repurpose the other facilities we have and just say, hey, is this big room better served for this VOTEC area or that VOTEC area? And maybe we start looking at saying, hey, maybe we can change that structure in those areas and remodel or revamp it to fit for that purpose, if that's the direction we go with our vocational program. So, tonight, I'd like to see us, you know, instead of keep delaying it, I'd like to see us move forward with something. And, and to start with, I'd like to make, move forward with, with a commitment for the hockey arena, with the idea that we would also look at funding for the middle school football field and potentially other, other ones. I think that would be the main one, whether we redo all the fields out there, I don't know if, you know, we have to, maybe that's gonna be decided at a later time. But at least we know in the direction we're heading and what we're trying to get accomplished and stuff. We got a pretty decent idea right now what it's gonna cost us, and, and I, I agree, I think, I, I don't like the idea of, 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 you know, forcing the, the landowners in the country to have to, you know, forego a seventy percent, you know, break on their taxes, you know. I certainly wouldn't get any benefit from it personally, but I certainly would vote for it, because I think if they can get it, I'm not gonna stand in their way of, of them being able to receive that credit. You know, I, I don't know if, whichever way we do it, I don't know if it really makes, you know, people either are gonna be for or against it and stuff. If we say, hey, if you don't do it, we're gonna, we're gonna pass it, we're gonna go ahead and do it anyway, I mean, you know, if, if that's the case, we just be upfront about it. You, you, you're voting on it to get your credit, if you don't vote on it, we're gonna do it, you don't get your credit. You know, it's, it's, which way do you go first? So, I, you know, I'm okay with doing the bonding first, and, and if it doesn't work, then they're fully aware that, you know, we have to get this done, it's something we need to do, and we'd rather have you have the credit, but if you don't vote for it, we can't give it to you. So therefore, you know, if you don't vote for it, we're gonna have to go ahead and do this project, because this is stuff that we just have to do. We need to move forward on this stuff, and we can't keep, you know, kicking it down the road like we've been doing. The longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost us too, and, and I think it's to our advantage to get things going sooner than later. And I think, Adam, you said at the last work session of the meeting, we talked about it's gonna be phased. So, you know, we could start working on the parts that we can do now that meet the funding requirements we can work on, and then start working on the other parts of it once we go through the referendum process and see how that turns out. So we can start working on what we can, putting the others back a year or two as we need to, and hopefully we'll get the rest of the stuff straightened out in between. And with that all said, to start the ball rolling, I would, I would make a motion that we, that we commit the five million dollars to the ice arena with the stipulation that, that, that it be a new facility to be determined location and stuff and function by the city and the, and the Hockey Association, since they've got their commitment in it too. And then, and that, I don't, I don't know about setting a percentage and minimum type thing, I just, I think if they're gonna go ahead with it, if it's gonna be a new facility, they're gonna be putting as much or more into it to get that to happen. So I don't think we need to necessarily stipulate it be less than that. And then, like I say, I also, you know, would, would want to move forward with, with the option to do the option one with the, with the middle school improvements to the, at least to the field out, the football field out there. And if we feel it's appropriate, maybe put some more money into some of the other recreational fields out there too.
Is that a separate motion though, for the ice arena, Steve?
No, I'm just making a motion for the ice arena, move that one forward. It seems like we're willing to go with something with the ice arena, five million dollars as a recommendation. I don't wanna, I just want to put that one behind us, then we can start concentrating on the, on the bigger picture and, and not have that coming up over and over again. And I think we seem to be moving toward the agreement that we'll, we'll work with the chemistry, or I'm sorry, the science department where it's at, and we will shuffle some classrooms around a group, you know, the departments together with the new addition. And we'll, we'll put those together in phases, because we can't do it all in one year anyway. So, I think ultimately, that's, that's the direction we seem to be all heading to, and I want to get that ball moving. So I make the motion that we go with five million to the hockey with the stipulation that be a new building. And then we start moving toward the high school and the middle school improvements.
So the motion, Steve, is for the high school, is what?
Nothing at this point, I'm doing these as a separate, to get that off the table, move that aside, and then we can start working on the...
This is basically five point eleven, he's making the motion for?
Yeah.
He's making the motion for five point eleven.
Just on the ice arena right now?
Yeah, yeah. Move that out of the way, and then we move on to the other.
I'll second the motion then for five million towards the ice arena, community venue to the city with those stipulations.
Okay, motion made and seconded to, for the district to appropriate five million when the project starts, that would be, right?
Yeah.
Which could be a while.
Year or two.
It's gonna be up to the city to get, to move that. And they will have to decide where to put it and so on.
Yep.
Just going back to, okay, motion made and seconded, okay. I just wanted to reflect a few comments about what we've done in the past for sports facilities. I mean, we did the gymnastics facility. I don't know what the cost was exactly, three and a half or four million somewhere. The football field, that was a seven million dollar cost. The track was included in that. And we supported all these sports things in the past. I think, I think to be fair, we should support the hockey, not, it isn't just hockey, it's ice arena for other things also, for kids skating and for that part of our hockey program and other, for the community. I, I think five million's a reasonable number to put toward it. I think we should do it, but that's my opinion, so. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is my question I have. We're committing five million, there's nothing been discussed how we're gonna fund all these projects yet. So if we, if we do five million, twenty-some million for the high school, how are we funding it? Are we gonna have to do a bond, lease levy? We haven't answered all the questions yet to be committing money to a project without having the funding issue done first, I think.
I think the information that was handed out addressed the different funding sources, and one of them would be a bond or a lease levy.
A bond or a lease levy.
Yeah.
So, so Tom, where, where I'm kinda at right now with the math is if we commit five million dollars to the, to the ice arena, then we could still go with the orange option, option one, for high school additions and improvements for twenty-two point four million without having to do a bond referendum or lease levy. Because we would have approximately twenty-seven million dollars of existing funds available.
All right.
So I think by voting to, to contribute five million dollars to the ice arena, and it puts us in a position to consider this orange option and moving forward with that without having to utilize lease levy money or a bond referendum. If we want additional, bigger packages for high school improvements, then we would have to consider lease levy money or a bond referendum. Is that, is that adding up?
All right.
Well, and I think, one thing, and I don't know if that helps, Tom, four million, that is general fund, that we have twelve million in, right? And we're gonna take four, so there will still be eight, eight and a half million left in our total general fund. But we are gonna use all seventeen and a half million of our fund balance that is assigned, correct? Whether we choose option, package, option two or three. And then we gotta decide if we want to bond, I'm not even gonna talk lease levy, if we want to bond to the people for eleven and a half million on option two, or sixteen and a half on option three. Just depends what you want to do with your high school.
Mr. Chairman, the, the topic on the table is the ice, the arena complex. I've been vocally supporting us in an eight million dollar contributor. I continue to think that that's where we should participate in this kind of project that has so many ripple-down implications beyond our school district and the citizenry of the county. Especially if we looked at not doing the west project, that would give us an additional two point three to put towards this arena project. That would get us closer to an eight million dollar contribution. And you look at the dollars presented in front of us during the work sessions, majority of the projects were twenty million dollars. And that's why I looked at an eight million dollar contribution, is to try to, to make the, the facility. And then that wouldn't even be enough to, to meet that goal, and so I'm, 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 I'm sticking to the eight million dollar suggestion, even though that's not the item on the, the table. And I just wanted to share my thoughts on where we should be from a supporter of this project.
You can raise that at a later point, can't you, the five? We're saying we're gonna start at five.
An additional contribution?
Right, I'm just saying, we've gotta start someplace, so if we're gonna start, I'm just saying, I don't think you're gonna get eight tonight. I think if we're trying to get some commitment toward the project, so I think we can raise it later if the, whatever, whoever's on the board at that time decides to. But I think you have to commit something if we're gonna be involved in it.
Well, we can, we can see where other costs come in too and stuff, and having some money available at a later date isn't bad in case some of the other costs and estimates should be different from what we're, we have right now. It gives us a little bit of leeway or room to, to adjust to some extent, and if things do better than we thought, we always could say, hey, we have some money to put into, whether it be the west school or the ice arena or other types of things. I just think I want to make, I always want to send the message and stuff that we are supporting it, and, and this is what we have available at this point, that we feel comfortable committing to it so that people who want to start the planning process can get started on something, can get moving on stuff. And if, and if, and if it's possible for us to do something more as we move forward, as we find other costs are coming in and stuff, you know, then that's great. But at this point, I think it's a good starting point just to get this moving off of dead center and, and let the city know that somebody is committing to this, and it kinda sends it back to them then to pick it up and go with it if that's what they want. I'm assuming they will, but if they shouldn't, then we've got five million dollars coming back to us that we have for, for other options then too. But I don't think that'll happen, I think they'll, they'll step up and, and do what they need to do to keep the project moving forward. The scope of the project is what they'll have to determine, you know, as we said before one time, once we know what amount of money they have, then it can figure out how to plan and, and get what they need to get for that amount of money. So I think something will happen, it just may not be the picture we were looking at initially and maybe what would be considered the best thing for the community overall in the long run, but, but at least it gets us to moving forward.
Before I commit any dollars, I would really like to see what the project cost is gonna be. And if the city's taking the lead, I would really like to know what they're gonna put into this. Not against the project, I'm just not willing to commit tonight, I'm with unclear answers to some of this stuff, so... I get a sense that five million is doable for most of you, but that's where I stand tonight. And maybe if Steve comes in with lower than what we've seen, then maybe Matt's offer of eight is doable. That's why I'm just, I really don't know what I'm willing to commit, I'm not walking away from it, but I'm not gonna commit to five million tonight with not all answers.
We're really not, we're committing, yet we're not, because the city hasn't committed nothing yet, so, you know. They're, they're gonna have to put in ten to make this thing have, even have a chance, so.
And I think if you looked at the work session, that's the number for sure they're looking at putting on the project, so.
I watched the whole discussion last night from city council on cable, you know, on, and watched all the, and I, I think they're serious, I think, I think if we say we're gonna do something, it'll help them make a decision. It's not, I'm sure they want more than five, but I'm saying we start there and we give it a shot, let them take it from there. It's my opinion, but it's up to the board.
So we're voting on this, we're voting to commit five million?
Right, I mean, potentially, the project has to go before they're gonna see any money. If they don't come up with their ten or whatever it takes to make it work, we won't be putting in anything, so. We're just saying we're willing to put in five if they're willing to proceed. We do have a motion on the floor and a second?
A second.
Or five? Assuming it goes forward, there's nothing spent yet until they adopt a plan and come up with the, where to put it and how much, and a lot of questions. But I think we're at least committing to go with the program, the hockey and skating as a community. And like I said, we put in a lot of money in all the other sports. And I think we really should do this for the community and for the school district.
I think we're pretty much, the whole board is in consensus to donate, to contribute to the ice arena project. I think we're all saying, we're all in favor of it, we're really arguing over is a dollar amount. So, we have made our commitment, can we just make a commitment we will be involved in a project without any dollar amount committed?
Well, we're, we're committing five million tonight if, if it passes, providing the city goes forward with it. It's gonna be, the ball's gonna be in their court, I mean, they're gonna have to take the lead and...
I think there's just too many unknowns of what and where and how it's gonna be done. We just make the commitment, we're here to help, we really haven't decided on a dollar amount?
No, no, we're deciding on a dollar amount, the five million.
Well, can we leave it an open, just say we're gonna help commit to this project, because we're seeing five, we heard eight?
Well, we said we're gonna start at five. I mean, I, I think that's a fair commitment.
Well, if we're making a motion, making a commitment of five, that's pretty much done. You can't come back three years and amend this main motion, five years down the road, say we're gonna throw another three.
Well, you can.
You could have a new motion.
Can do that, you can just make a new motion saying we'll put in an additional amount of money, but that's not what we're talking about right now, we're talking about five.
Right.
Get the project started, and, and they, having an open commitment that we're gonna do something, that doesn't help them unless we tell them how much or give some, them some idea what it's gonna be. If we're gonna, there's a far difference between one million and, and, and five million or, or even ten million. So, we have to give them an idea of what they're working with so that they know what they can start planning for. So I, I think we need to make some kind of commitment, and I think five is the good point to be, and, and if, sometime in the future, if there's more money needed and the board, if the board feels it's appropriate, we can always give more, but at this point, you know, I, I think five million dollars is a good point for them to work with from us.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And a second to commit five million dollars for this project, providing it moves forward from the city. And the motion also stipulates, Steve, it has to be the new facility?
Yeah, it has to be a new facility, it won't be going to put any money into the old facility.
So the motion, the motion states a five-year stipulation and, right? That's what the motion stated then?
A what?
Has to be started within five years?
No, there's no stipulation on when they started, just five million dollars.
Wasn't that a request? For five, do it within the next five years?
Well, I think it'll be dead long before that if it doesn't move. I mean, yeah, it's, it's gonna have, the city's gonna have to make a decision just shortly. When it'll start, that's a year or two, but it's not, it won't be five years. If it is, it'll be, it won't happen, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the main motion by adding in the words a five-year stipulation. At the end of five years, now since the project has started, we will come back to the board and reconsider.
You mean it has to be started by that point? I think that's pretty safe, but...
I second that amended motion.
Okay, well, well, okay, any discussion on the, well, there's no discussion on the amendment, so. We'll vote on the amended motion.
You can vote on the amendment to the main motion.
Amendment to the main motion.
Of a five-year stipulation for the project to be started.
Right, okay. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. Well, now the main motion reads, it has to be completed with, started within 5 years. And it's a $5 million commitment, providing it moves forward with the city taking the lead with this. Any discussion on the main amended motion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we go back to...
512.
512. The high school remodel. Where were we at before?
So the, it really comes down to the option. As you have heard, you can do option 1, not go to the voters. Option 2, it's a little more cost and potentially you're going to have to ask for a referendum in that case. Total dollars at this point probably aren't figured, but it'd be in that 11, 12 million dollar range to do option 2. To do option 3, you'd be closer to that 16, 17 million. And with that then, you know, I recommend doing option 2. You get a little more done, you get a little more accomplished. It kind of does some of the goals that you wanted to do overall. And I would tell you, I want to have a little faith in voters that they will support this. So I guess I'm, I'm not afraid to say, let's go to the voters and ask them for support. If you figure out, and if you look at the actual impact of a 12 and 1/2 million on a $200,000 home, that's $52.72 a year. They can skip a coffee once a week and they'd be okay.
$4 a month?
$4 a month.
Skip it once a month?
Yeah, skip it once a month. It's not a big number, folks. So, just as an idea.
What is the average value of a home in Nobis County with the big increase in values last year?
I, I don't know that number. Originally, the last time we ran a bond referendum, it was 100 and, I wanna say it was 138,000, but I think 152 is probably closer.
If we don't do the West side, do we need to come for 11 and 1/2? Can we come for, can you come for 9, 9 and 1/2? If you take the 2.3 out?
Mr. Chairman, and I, and I appreciate the, the attempts to, to change the, the dollar amounts a bit maybe. But the only thing that happens by not doing some of these needs is it's gonna cost more when we have to do some additional things later. And I, I mean, I was prepared and I still am prepared to do option 3 and to ask the voters to support 16 and 1/2 million dollar bond. And I think that it's not, I, I put a lot more faith into our building administration and staff to tell us what works best for their classroom needs and designs. I mean, I think it's good for us to think that we, and I'm, I'm ready to support what they are gonna have for the best teaching environment, whether it's a science wing that's added on or reworking of other classrooms. I'd much rather see us show support on what we're gonna ask our constituents to vote for and then let our staff direct the plans to construct the facility to educate the kids.
I guess it was a year ago, we voted to leave the West as a green space for a few years. But here all of a sudden, less than a year later, and we already got plans for the West side. I kind of agree with Matt, let's take the 2.3 out of the, of the equation and leave it West as the green space.
Well, and that's why I'm, I'm asking, I wonder what option now, like Matt, you said 16 and 1/2. Do you want to do the West side?
No, no, I...
That's what I mean. If we, if we take the 2.3 out, do we have to ask for 16 and 1/2 or 11 and 1/2? Can we take that down by a couple million?
There's the potential. I have to get the numbers totally worked out.
And that's if everybody agrees not to do West. I, I would rather just plant it to grass for now.
If we went option 3 at 16.5, we take, say, 2 and 1/2 million out, just a ballpark figure, we're down to 14 million we're asking the voters for. Because we're putting a lot of money in the project ourselves.
Right.
You would think that would convince the voters that we are actually contributing what we have and fund balance to help the project go forward. My opinion.
Thank you for serious about bonding for the high school. I'd rather see option 3 and get it done right for a couple million more, you know, whatever that number is. If it's gonna be 16 million or 15 or 17, kind of where that's gonna fall when we get a final plan. And we'll know a little bit more about that. But we have one chance to do the high school. I'm with Matt. One chance to do it. If we're gonna do it right, we might as well do it and get it all taken care of and have a science wing that we're proud of somewhere with the new classrooms. And so I would be in support with that, around that 16, 17 million.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Langard. A motion tonight needs to have any dollars attached or just a, an option to provide direction?
You would be giving me direction to move forward for planning. And then I'm gonna ask, do you want to do an August election, November election?
That question's separate from the motion.
You can include it in the motion if you want.
I got one more question for motions made. Sorry, Matt.
That's all right.
So in this option 3, there's that improvements for the north wing, for redoing the windows that were replaced years ago with paneling? That is not in this option at all?
It's north wing.
Am I correct?
Yep.
So if we use the long-term finance or long-term care, whatever you call that, are we gonna delay redoing the north wing?
You could.
We're delaying that project then?
You could.
So here's my question or thought. You can tell me if I'm right or wrong or whatever. Wasn't the original plan to redo the north wing, wasn't that like 2 to 3 million dollars? And I need your help. You're looking at me? Do you remember what that was for the redoing? Can we use that 2.3 million to go towards that project? To redo the north wing?
One...
Those projects, I think what you mentioned in improving the north wing is included in the blue option and the green option.
Is it?
1.4 million.
Right in the middle.
1.3...
Replace existing metal panel and windows in the middle.
Is it?
Building renovation.
Yeah, it's there.
Yep, I'm sorry.
And it also addresses upgrades of the finishes and built-in. So it's really 2.0, roughly 2.4 million.
I don't know if my glasses are dirty. You're just fine print.
It's really fine. I tried to blow it up, but I didn't do a very good job.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve option 3 as listed minus the West site improvements.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Matt, seconded by Steve to approve option 3, less the West site cost of, whatever that number was.
Roughly 34 million.
Right. So that would be, yeah, we're not, yeah, okay.
How many million, John, you said?
About 34, I believe.
I think it's 33.1.
Maybe it's closer to 33.
33.1.
33, yeah.
Of those dollars, we could put in the total.
33.2.
So a bonding number would have to be how much then? If we use...
14.
We can, roughly?
14, no.
14?
14, 15 million roughly.
So you go to the voters first with that number?
And that would include the $3 million for the middle school site improvements.
Right.
It's gotta be in the motion then.
We can have another motion.
Option 3 includes the middle school site improvements.
The motion stated everything on option 3 minus West site improvement.
Okay.
All the way down to the bottom.
Right.
Okay. Everything in option 3 except West.
Any further discussion?
I just think it's important for the board to remember. I think you've done amazing work trying to navigate what are the needs, what we're moving forward, how to be thoughtful of this. I want to be careful that West doesn't just get completely like, we're not doing that at all, only because I think a couple of things have been talked about. In some ... Talk about the dollars that have been spent on other sports. Currently, our softball, they play on a makeshift, adulty, city-owned facility. So somewhere in the future, that needs to be... I just don't want it to feel like, it's like the never thing, because then it likely will come back up. And I don't want the perception to feel like, well, we said we weren't doing that. So it needs to be more, we're not doing that now, but just to keep it on the table. I think Mr. Turner, as you, there's a lot of youth support for baseball and softball. There's partnerships that are helping improve those facilities. So that site does still potentially make sense to create kind of a softball complex, maybe baseball, or maybe we would maybe invest more money into the group of softball on the middle school property. So it's just not now, but I don't want it to feel like, because it will come up again, and I don't want that to cause frustration. I think that's just important to point out.
My, my thought always was that we're saying, putting into grass now until we decide what we want to do with it sometime in the future. And here getting funding will be part of that.
And that was the problem, the point of getting funding in 2 to 3 years. Maybe we'll have it to do that project.
Well, if you're talking about sports, one, one sport I think we've forgotten about completely, which is near and dear to my heart, because I participated in it in high school, was cross-country. I don't necessarily say we need to build a whole new course, but it would really be nice if we could find some maintenance dollars somewhere to, to, to make the course we have safe. There's rotted out plywood covering holes and, and stuff that was put in there four, five years ago already, and nothing's been done with that course at all. So I understand these millions of dollars of programs and stuff, but we have some that don't cost that much and could certainly use a few dollars to help, you know, dress up the little bits they have. You know, it's, like I say, especially when it becomes a safety issue. I don't know how they can even get by with using that without kids, more kids being, kids have been injured, more kids being injured out there. So, you know, keep that in mind too.
I don't believe we're putting that. Still, it's gonna be a priority to do. It's just, it's not included right now. But as the bids come in on these projects, as you bid them out, we may find some dollars left over or some dollars that are not being used that we could put there.
Right, I would...
The bids may come in favorable. We, this is just an estimate, so.
Mr. Chair, I would encourage Mr. Langard to make sure that the West softball or, and cross-country get put on the district action plan in the near future, just so it's there, so it's not forgotten. So it could be on the plan, the 5-year plan, the 4-year, 3-2, but needs to be on the plan.
Yeah. I, I think in the long run and stuff, once we, once we further develop the intermediate school and learning center and, and community ed site, there'll be larger grass areas out there and then there'll be space for across country. My concern is the safety of the course that is right now. And I don't think it would take a lot of dollars to have somebody go out there and, and do some touch-up filling holes and things like that to make it, you know, safe. It's not a lot of spots, but there's just enough of them to be a concern. I think the, the course itself, the cross-country, it'll be probably the last thing we do, but, you know, but it's coming up, I think, once we get grass, a billiard of grass area with more parking and stuff for them to use. I'm not really concerned about that. I'm just concerned about the safety of the course we have now, if we could put a couple bucks in there somewhere.
Okay, are we ready to, any further discussion on the motion?
I got a question. Sitting here thinking. John, I'm gonna put you on the spot. We, we have committed 5 million to Hockey Arena.
Ice, Ice Arena.
Ice.
Whatever. So do we have to include the 5 million in the bonding right away? Or is that?
It's not listed. Well, it's listed there, but...
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't necessarily be a bonding.
So that's, well, it's in the whole, whole package here.
Yeah.
So we can, we specify it comes out of the...
In.
Fund balance?
It'd come out of the assigned. You're not specifying the dollars at this point.
Where it's coming from.
It'll come out of the assigned.
The arena.
Huh?
The arena?
Yes.
The 17 and 1/2?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
I got a question. I'm sorry. Sorry, Lisa. So we're gonna use general bonds, the first option, right?
Correct.
So if it, if the referendum fails, step 2 is gonna be lease levy? Or are we gonna bring it back to the table and discuss it?
That comes back to you guys, because, for discussion.
I think you gotta sell to people this first time. Please don't give that option to us. Put it in their lap and not let us have to make that an option.
I don't want to say if it's gonna fail, we're doing lease levy. I mean, I want the understanding that it's gonna be a general bond referendum.
And I'm not saying we're gonna. I'm just saying, please don't give us that option to even talk about.
Well, if I do the numbers right, we're putting in $27 million of our own pocket.
For a lot of projects, yeah.
For this project.
That's, that's why I want to make sure I...
And we're asking for...
I want to make sure we're accurate on the dollars before...
So we're asking for like 14 to 15 million. So we're putting in way more than what we're asking for. We're not funding the whole project with a general bond.
And I, I think, like, I'm on the same wavelength as you. I think that voting tonight for option 3 just really stresses the importance that we are all champions of a bond referendum. If, and I feel like that's what this vote would signal tonight. If we, the seven of us, really work together to champion this plan, I think a referendum can pass. But it's going to take all of us to be really, you know, supportive and, you know, cheerleaders of this, advocating for what it's going to mean for our district.
At what point do we talk about when? I mean, after we have this vote, then is that a separate vote win? Or is that gonna come up at a discussion later, once we kind of figure out exactly where we're at?
Well, again, if you look at the timeline that was handed out, an August election means we have to have a review and comment into the Department of Ed by mid-April. And would need to adopt a resolution by the end of May. So there's time, but it's not a lot of time.
Didn't we discuss just having it with the general election before for saving...
That's your two option. I mean, after the first of the year, you're gonna probably see increased costs. So even by mid-July, you're going to have to have a review and comment into MDE. And then by August, mid-August, it's the last day to adopt a resolution. So it's tight timelines.
If not November, it was February, right?
February.
So, but you can, I can move forward with consensus. I just can't wait real long on when you want to do the election, particularly if you want to do it in August.
We have a motion to second.
It doesn't have to decide it right now, but does it?
We can do it in March.
Can we vote on the, vote on the motion and then discuss that later?
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
And this is for option 3?
Option 3. We're excluding the West property improvements, just for temporarily. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now where do we go?
So with 13, you've already addressed item 13, so you don't have to really, you can skip over that one, move on to number 14.
Okay, discussion, action on National Insurance Services, consulting agreement.
So, maybe I'll let, I've been doing a lot of talking. Let, I'll let Dave talk about this one. I'll fill in the blanks. I'll fill in the blanks.
We've had a, a discussion and proposal from National Insurance Services to provide, they basically become our agent of record for all our benefits and our health insurance. Right now, a lot of that discussion and questions comes from in-house, and it's basically overwhelming our HR department. We have talked in the past about actually adding to our HR department. This would provide us with an outlet for employees to get their questions answered. They would help improve our benefit packages if we're, if we're looking at additional or different benefits, and they would do it for less than what it would cost us to hire another employee. After our meeting with this group, our recommendation would be to go with them as our agent of record and allow them to take on some of this mostly benefit-type questions and, and responsibilities. Our health insurance, some in the past have provided some of this, bits and pieces. Currently, ours does not really have much of this assistance. And they work with Laverne, they work with some of the area schools around here, and, and they've been very pleased with their, with their services. So, we're recommending that we enter an agreement with NIS to provide the, the services.
Okay, any questions?
Do we have, I'm sorry, did you have a cost on it?
It's a, it's a 1% of our health insurance premiums, which is going to be somewhere around 50,000.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement.
By Steve?
Second.
Second by Adam. And is it supposed to do what for, Steve, exactly?
This assists our HR department with, with managing benefits. Health insurance questions come in daily from our employees with concerns about come, claims and, you know, all sorts of different eligibility items. It takes a lot of the liability off of our HR department. That's all these people do, and so, they've got the expertise and the ability to do it in a much more efficient manner. And then, it allows our current employees to manage some of the other things that get pushed to the side.
You said neighboring districts are using it now?
There's quite a few people that, that use these types of services.
So, this is a one-year contract then, or?
This would be an annual.
One year at a time.
One year at a time. If we're not happy with it, we can always drop it.
So, Dave, so any of our staff then could call this company, just bypass our actual HR people, and they could call this company and get their questions answered?
Right, right. So, where Kelsey does a lot of this work now, takes up a lot of her time. This would free her up to do some of the other jobs that, that we're trying to get done.
Which allows our employees to become better consumers on their own without creating a liability on the district.
Okay, any discussion? We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Long-term reports, John?
I'm not going to cover much other than Dan Livdahl was in in regards to the watershed project. They are planning at this point, based on his conversation with the operations committee bidding in May, with potential of a contract starting late fall. So, September more than likely. It may end up getting kicked back a year. The second one I'm going to just cover really quickly is August election or November election?
November.
I got a November. All I need is a consensus, yeah, I don't need a vote.
I think they're. I'm nervous about this, but I think August would be better than November because I think we want to stay away from a general election. There's going to be more people getting out to the polls in November, meaning that we have to make sure that we are educating all those voters about what the referendum is. That's more work on the district's part, thinking about all of the, the efforts and outreach that we would have to do to ensure that all those thousands of voters are going to understand the implications. Focusing on a smaller subset of voters in August, I think, is a more manageable task despite the shorter timeframe. So, there are certainly trade-offs, but I, I lean towards staying away from the general election.
I support August.
Nope, August is fine.
And there would be increased costs for us, because we'd run it separate, so we'd have to, all the costs of them.
It'd be our, yeah, it, well, there should be a primary election, but it'd still be a higher cost, so.
I think we would be saving some costs on like marketing and.
But it's a one-location vote, right?
That I don't know for sure. If it's totally on our own, absolutely it is. If it's part of the primary election, then no. And I can't answer that on the date, so.
So, we're consensus of August?
August.
August.
I guess so.
August.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you. We've been here long enough, so it's time to get to the end.
Instructional committee?
There is just one thing, we talked about cable three and the funding for cable three, and there may be some changes coming to how that's funded. So, we'll wait for more information on that piece.
Okay, operations?
Just a side note, with Dan Livdahl's presentation, talking about the timeline of things, we think that the, the affected land surrounding the project would be suitable for, for silage this growing season, so the plan is to continue with that and hope for a start date after the silage can be cut.
Okay, and the west project is on schedule? The demolition part?
It is on schedule. Dave, you sent some pictures out, looks like it's moving along pretty good.
Yeah, that's coming along.
It's moving along, yes, it is.
Okay, any other reports? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting.